Good evening. On behalf of the Commissioners and Staff, I'd like to welcome you to the October 13th, 2022 City of Roseville Planning Commission Meeting. Please put all electronic devices on silent at this time. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table. And if you plan to speak at tonight's meeting, please complete a blue speaker card and return it to the staff table. As a reminder, Planning Commission meetings are broadcast live and replayed throughout the week on Consolidated Communications and Comcast. I will now call the meeting to order. Lupe, may I please have a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Brashiers?
Here.
Commissioner Jensen?
Here.
Commissioner Hagen-Jose?
Here.
Commissioner Pryor?
Here.
Commissioner Randolph?
Here.
Vice Chair Covington?
Here.
And Chair Martin is absent, excused.
Thank you, Lupe. Please join me in the Pledge of Legions.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberatory, and just for all.
Lupe, please begin staff introductions.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Lupe Nelson, Recording Secretary.
Good evening, Commissioners. Joe Speaker, Assistant City Attorney.
Good evening, Chair Covington and Commissioners. Greg Bitter, Planning Manager.
Good evening, Chair Covington and Commissioners. Kenny Shallow, Associate Planner.
The public comment period is a time for anyone who would like to address the Commission on an item that is not on today's agenda. When addressing the Commission, please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the Commission on an item not on tonight's Hearing none, I will close the public comment period. We'll move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of routine items that may be approved under one motion as recommended in the staff reports. However, each item may be considered separately upon a request by the audience, Planning Commission, or staff. Tonight's consent calendar consists of one item, item 5.1, minutes from the September 22, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Is there anyone on the Commission or in the audience who would like to pull this item off the consent calendar for separate discussion? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Commissioner Pryor has made the motion and Commissioner Hagen-Jose has seconded the motion. Roll call, Lupe, please.
Commissioner Randolph?
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
Commissioner Brashiers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hagen-Jose?
Yes.
And Chair Covington?
Yes.
The motion is approved. Next on the agenda is requests and presentations. Before we begin, I want to review the meeting procedures. We will hear the staff presentation, then I will take questions from the Commission, then I will open the public hearing. The applicant will make a presentation, then I will open the public comment, and the public may have an opportunity to speak. Then I will close the public comment, and the applicant will be given an opportunity to provide a rebuttal. Then I will close the public hearing. Then the Commission may ask questions of staff, and finally, the Commission will consider the item and make a decision based on the information provided in the report from staff and the testimony presented during tonight's hearing. Item 6.1 is a request for an administrative permit for a parking reduction at 1950 Blue Oaks Boulevard for the record file number PL 22-0337. Kenny, may we have your presentation, please?
Yes, good evening again. I'm here tonight to present the Plaza at Blue Oaks Parking Reduction. The project site is located in the West Roseville Specific Plan on parcel F 31 at the northeast corner of Fidament Road and Blue Oaks Boulevard. The site has a zoning and land use designation of community commercial and is developed with the Plaza at Blue Oaks, which is a retail center anchored by Raley's. Surrounding uses include an undeveloped high-density residential parcel to the north, Fidament Ranch Apartments to the east, single-family residences to the south, and a medical office building to the west. In August 2020, the City Council approved a design review permit, tentative subdivision map, and tree permit to allow development of the center. Majority of the buildings have been fully constructed, however, the tenant spaces are still under construction, with the exception of Raley's, which has been in operation since June of this year, and two other in-line tenants. Parking for the center was based on the requirement for shopping centers, which is one space per 200 square feet of building area. And as tenant spaces are leased, each tenant utilizes the zoning ordinance parking requirement based on the use type. Several of the tenant spaces have been leased out by eating and drinking establishments, which has resulted in an increase in the parking requirements. The site provides 452 parking spaces, but 526 spaces are required, including 20 park-and-ride stalls as required by the specific plan. So in order to accommodate the mix of uses, the applicant is requesting an administrative permit for a 74-space or 14% parking reduction. Since the center is not yet fully operating, a technical memorandum was prepared by Farron Peers, a transportation engineering consultant, which analyzed the greatest parking demand for the uses. Parking occupancy counts were conducted at four businesses that would be tenants in the center. These include Chipotle with Drive-Thru in Roseville, Goddard School in Rockland, Autozone in Roseville, and the Habit Burger Drive-Thru in Woodland. The parking counts were conducted during the most likely peak hour of parking demand, which was determined to be on a weekday at noon or 1:00 p.m., with the secondary peak at 2:00 or 6:00 p.m. Using this data, the parking requirements were adjusted based on the net increases or decreases in parking demand observed. As shown in this table, Chipotle has a 13-space increase in parking demand at noon due to the peak surge observed at the comparable facility. And in comparison, Habit Burger has a decrease of 13 spaces at noon because of the lower parking demand observed. Overall, the results show that during each of the peak hours, there is a total net decrease in parking demand. The adjustments from the previous table were used to determine the total parking demand for the uses in the center. The table on this slide shows that the maximum capacity would be 92% of the total parking supply. This means that even during the peak demand hours, there would be some surplus in parking. Therefore, staff anticipates there will be a sufficient number of spaces available throughout the day to meet the greatest parking demand for all of the uses in the center. Early notification of the project was posted on the Arcona website, and the public hearing notice was mailed to a 300-foot radius, published in the Press Tribune and on the Arcona website. No public comments have been received. The property owner also notified existing and prospective tenants about the parking reduction, and no concerns have been raised. In conclusion, staff finds the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the zoning ordinance general plan and the West Roseville Specific Plan, and staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt the three findings of fact and approve the administrative permit subject to the three conditions of approval. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Kenny. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this time?
I have a question. Kenny, thanks for your presentation. Is this change in our reduction in the number of parking spaces a permanent thing, or would it change over time if uses changed in the...
Yes, so the conditions are written, so that is based on the current mix of uses.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I will now open the public hearing. I would like to invite the project representative for this item to address the Commission.
Good evening. My name is Joe Zawicki with Signature Homes. We own the property. I want to thank the staff and the Commissionary for taking this opportunity to hear our side. The project is actually fully leased without one exception. We're holding back three parcels, haven't released those leases yet until we get a determination as to whether we're going to be able to provide parking as the standards. We're asking for a deviation primarily. We have a lot different mix than what we had initially anticipated. We find that a lot of uses have changed in terms of their parking requirements. A lot of people now, for example, when you go to Chipotle or someplace like that, you get your meal and you leave. You don't go in the restaurants. We've got dentists, we've got hair salons, we've got nail salons, but we have a large number of restaurants there. So we concur with staff's requirement that in events things change, we will have to change, but we'd like to move forward this project. Farron Peers did a significant study and found that the parking does work. I think the standards are not as current as what the current uses are. So I'm asking for your permission to go ahead and complete this project and get everything going. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for the project representative? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I will now open the public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address the Commission on this item? Before you start, let me remind you that you have five minutes to speak, and also, if you haven't yet, please fill out a blue speaker card for the staff, please.
Sure, will do. Thank you, should be fairly quick. My name's Derek Pell. I live here on Park Drive. I think this seems like a good idea, so I'm supportive of that. I tend to look at the public notices on Arcona, and it triggered my memory that there's been a few of these. So I looked, and this is the fourth parking reduction request this year, and there were a couple more in '21. I just think maybe we should think about that and suggest, you know, maybe parking minimums or mandates should be reduced in line with... Yeah, suggestions, and hey, maybe even replace it with a parking maximum. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I will now close the public comment period. Any additional questions from the Commission? I will now close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the three findings of fact and approve the administrative permit subject to three conditions of approval. That's for item 6.1, administrative permit, 1950 Blue Oaks Boulevard, parcel F 31, Plaza at Blue Oaks Parking Reduction for the record file PL 22-0337.
I second that.
Okay, Commissioner Pryor has made the motion, and Commissioner Randolph has seconded the motion. Roll call, please, Lupe?
Yes, Commissioner Randolph?
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
Commissioner Brashiers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hagen-Jose?
Yes.
And Chair Covington?
Yes.
The motion is approved. There is a 10-day appeal period for this item. Item 6.2 is the Commercial Corridor Plans Project, which is a request to consider the addendum to the 2035 General Plan Environmental Impact Report certified on August 5, 2020, and the 2021 Housing Element Addendum. Recommend City Council approve a general plan amendment and rezones, approve the Atlantic Street Corridor Specific Plan, the Douglas Harding Corridor Specific Plan, and the Douglas Sunrise Corridor Specific Plan, and approve an ordinance amendment to Title 19 of the Municipal Code Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 19.18.030, Special Area District. For the record, file number PL 21-0383. Lauren, may we have your presentation, please?
Yeah, good evening, Commission. My name is Lauren Hawker, Senior Planner, and we're here tonight to give you the presentation on the Commercial Corridor Plans. We were here before, back in July, and have made some revisions and are now here to show you the public, or walk you through the public hearing draft of the project. And to give the presentation, actually Jessica will be taking it on.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jessica Lynch, Associate Planner. Tonight, we are going to focus on the project components and what would be needed to move this project forward. We will also go over some changes that have occurred since we last spoke to you. You can see one major change here on this context map. In the Atlantic Plan area has changed. We will go over that in more detail in just a minute. And lastly, we will talk about staff's recommendations on the project. Let's start by quickly reviewing the project's three co-equal goals and its key features. The key, the co-equal goals are streetscape improvements to improve aesthetics and comfort along the corridors, commercial redevelopment and reinvestment, facilitate high-density housing particularly in commercial areas. The three corridor-specific plans for the Atlantic, Douglas Harding, and Douglas Sunrise corridors hope to achieve these goals through the project's key features, which are various streetscape improvement options, frontage design guidelines, building and development design guidelines, permitting multifamily residential as a permitted use in commercial zone districts, correction of the land uses to be compatible with the existing zone district on non-conforming properties that aren't common in the older areas of the city. Similarly, for few properties, changing the underlying zone district, replacing most plan development ordinances with a standard zone district, and utility capacity studies to cover up to 50 units in the Atlantic, up to 200 units in Douglas Harding, and up to 600 units in Douglas Sunrise. We previously talked about how this project was developed after the City Council designated the creation of the Commercial Corridor Plans as a council priority back in 2019, after seeing the success of the Riverside Gateway Specific Plan and the Downtown Specific Plan. City Council was clear in its direction to staff that we were to develop a plan that gave property owners, residents, business owners maximum flexibility and provide an easy-to-follow guide to help them know what they can do on their property and what kind of design and improvements they can see happening in their community over the next 20 or so years. Staff's intent here is to make the development process easier, faster, cheaper, and more reliable. The proposed land use changes and rezones are intended to fix land use and zoning incompatibilities that can stall some projects and improvements to make it easier for people to make changes to their properties and not get caught up in red tape. Let's talk more about how this project will do that. First, let's review a bit about how we've gotten to this point. After City Council's direction to staff to prepare these corridor plans, staff started working right away to figure out the issues, the goals for what we wanted to achieve, which areas to include and exclude, and to secure funding. Staff hit the ground running on this effort in June of 2021 when we held the first community outreach event, a virtual walking tour, open house, and survey. Staff used feedback from that event to create our first stab at the land use plans for each of the corridors and start thinking about what each of the corridors should look like. We published those first maps in December of 2021 and started taking comments on those. We held another virtual community workshop in 2022 to hear more from the community on what their initial reactions to the land use plans, maps were, and to gather more information about what the plans needed to do at the streetscape level to revitalize and support the community. Based on the feedback we received, we made revisions to the maps and created plans for each of the commercial corridors that staff felt balanced the needs and desires of as many stakeholders as possible while still setting up the plan in a way that meets the project goals. Along the way, staff talked with people from all walks of the community, residents, property owners, tenants, business owners, property managers, et cetera. We kept gathering information and making adjustments along the way until we published our draft plans in July. Then we held workshops here at the Planning Commission on July 28th and at the City Council on August 3rd. Staff then again made more revisions to reflect additional feedback and direction from the Planning Commission and Council. We added a lot of visuals to really bring home the ideas of what each of the corridors could aspire to. We released the public hearing draft plans at the end of September, and now here we are. The most significant change to the project since the last time we spoke to you is the change to the Atlantic Street Corridor Plan Area Boundary. We removed all of the single-family properties located south of Shearer Street, as well as the open space along Dry Creek. Because of this change, staff is still proposing to change the land use designation of the open space from low-density residential to open space. But since that property is no longer a part of the plan area, that is now a separate action we will ask you to provide a separate recommendation on. Also, in the Atlantic Corridor, we are no longer proposing to rezone properties north of Shearer Street and east of East Street to R 3 for multifamily housing. We heard the community's opposition to this, so those properties will not be changed. Lastly, at the workshop in July, we got your feedback on whether or not we should rezone the properties along Will's Road from industrial to general commercial. And the general consensus from the Planning Commission and the City Council was that it was desired to allow those businesses as much flexibility as possible, as far as the number and types of businesses allowed, as long as it did not interfere with their current businesses. Because of this, staff is still proposing to rezone these properties to general commercial, but we have changed the permitted use table so that you only need a conditional use permit for auto-body businesses if you are within 300 feet of residential uses. This allows this use to occur along Will's Road without a conditional use permit, but continues to require any body, any auto-body businesses along Atlantic Street to go through the conditional use permit process. A couple of changes that have occurred since the last time we were here in the Douglas Sunrise Corridor are that staff has moved away from a rezone we were considering for some R 1 and R 2 properties located on the north side of Cardinal Way to R 3, as shown on the left side of this slide. After the feedback, we determined that it was best to leave those properties as they currently are. And on the right, you will, at the other end of the plan area, for one of the planned development properties located just south of the automall on Lead Hill Boulevard, staff has had initially proposed to have both community and general commercial, but after some additional analysis on the businesses located on the properties, the community commercial zone was determined to be the most appropriate for the existing businesses. Now to go over the policy changes that we've incorporated into the public hearing draft plans based on the feedback we received. We put some more thought into ensuring accessibility for the pavement treatments we are considering. We developed a policy intended to incentivize property owners to preserve historic architectural features and even to restore or add them when possible by offering a streamlined process for properties built in the 1940s and earlier that propose preservation and reuse as part of the project. We added a trigger to the affordable housing policy to ensure that the affordable housing is provided timely. We revised the step-back rule in the design guidelines to add more clarity and added it to the commercial mixed-use design guidelines, so it will apply to those projects located next to single-family residential as well. I will be talking more about this, the specifics on this, in just a moment. And lastly, we added some clarity about the definition of large canopy trees. And lastly, here are some more of the general changes we made in all three plans. First, we got a lot of suggestions to add a glossary to the plan to help people understand some of the technical terms used in the plans, so we added that to all three plans. Similarly, we added descriptions of the land use designations and zoning districts used in the plans, rather than rely on a reader having to look them up in either the general plan or the zoning ordinance, so that all of the information can be found in one place right there in the plan. Next, we added imagery and formatting to make the document more of a finished product and to provide some aspirational images so everyone can know what kind of visual improvements they can expect. And lastly, we moved the processes and development standards to the city's zoning ordinance and added a new special area chapter, Chapter 19.33, Commercial Corridor Plans. After a lot of consideration, staff felt that this was, would be the most efficient way to capture all of the elements of the plans in one single place and to avoid possible issues down the road where we have different pieces of information in different places. We summarized this information in the plans themselves and then added links to the location where the information is available on the zoning ordinance, so readers have the option of looking at the nitty-gritty if they choose to. Overall, we made the process descriptions in the corridor plans into user-friendly summaries on how the regulatory processes work, including flow charts. This approach means that all vital information remains within the corridor plans, written in a more accessible way. For the more legalistic, regulatory language, the corridor plans direct readers to the zoning ordinance. All of your changes we've just talked to you about are described in more detail in Attachment 1 of your Planning Commission packet. Now that we've talked about what's changed since the last time we were here, let's go over the nuts and bolts of the requested entitlements. First, the project requires a general plan amendment to do the following. Amend the actual text of the general plan document and to add references to the new plans in the land use element. Amend Figure 2-2, the general plan land use map, to reflect the land use designation changes in the plans. Correct the land use from low-density residential to open space in the Dry Creek Open Space Area and to remove the land use designation over arterial roadways within and adjacent to the plan areas, consistent with current city practice. Amend Figure 2-1 to add the boundaries of the new specific plans, and amend Figures 3-1 and 8-3 because the specific plan boundaries and city land use map are included as background information on these figures. Next, the project includes the adoption of a resolution to approve each new specific plan. Each plan includes chapters on the background and setting, land use, circulation, utilities, design guidelines, and implementation of the plans. The plans also include a water and sewer technical study to ensure that there is capacity for up to 850 residential units in all three plan areas, which includes up to 50 units assumed within the Atlantic Street Plan, up to 200 units in the Douglas Harding Plan, and up to 600 units in the Douglas Sunrise Plan. The staff report goes over the features in the plans in more detail, but we wanted to summarize some of the key features which we know are of importance to the community. The specific plans include specific design standards that apply where multifamily or commercial development is located next to single-family homes. This graphic is from the specific plans and shows the requirement for a minimum eight-foot landscape setback, building height limitations when within 30 feet of a single-family property, which we refer to as the step-back rule, and avoiding routing new development traffic onto local residential streets. The Atlantic Street and Douglas Harding plans also include a multifamily residential design standard requiring the use of traditional building materials and features, as shown in the model streetscape image here. This design standard applies throughout Atlantic Street and to the areas west of Folsom Road in the Douglas Harding Plan. The plans also include streetscape and frontage design standards, which include widening sidewalks to five feet, providing street trees, and landscaping along the sidewalk, and placing buildings closer to the street to create character and identity, as shown in the model streetscape image here. Together with the general plan amendments and the adoption of the specific plan, the specific plans, the project includes a separate rezone action for each specific plan area and for the infill area. The rezone changes the underlying zoning districts for a few properties as discussed in the staff report and applies the special area overlay for each plan. These overlays will be shown as SA-AT in the Atlantic Corridor, SA-DH in the Douglas Harding Corridor, and SA-DS in the Douglas Sunrise Corridor. This overlay establishes the development standards and approval processes discussed on the next slide. Lastly is the zoning ordinance amendment, which would amend Title 19 of the Roseville Municipal Code, which is the zoning ordinance. Going down this list on this slide in order, the amendment would do the following. The first change is for the purpose of adding the three new specific plans to the list of special area districts. The second change would establish the permitted uses, including non-conforming uses, development standards, parking standards, and entitlement and approval procedures for all three specific plans in the new Chapter 19.33. And the next three changes would be to add references to the new Chapter 19.33 standards. A detailed description and list of the key features included in the new Chapter 19.33 is included in your staff report, but some of the most important standards include: A conditional use permit is not required for multifamily projects in commercial zones. Non-conforming uses and buildings occur where the use or building on the property is not consistent with the zone, and normally, these properties cannot be improved. But this can lead to buildings and properties in poor condition, so the plan will allow improvement as long as the neighboring properties aren't negatively impacted. The plans include streamlining for both commercial and multifamily residential projects. Minor commercial improvements can be improved over the counter, and multifamily residential projects don't require a public hearing, but notices will be mailed to everyone within 300 feet, and a public hearing can be held if requested. The corridor plans are intended to encourage redevelopment and revitalization of properties within the older commercial corridors of the city by correcting longstanding land use conflicts, establishing development standards, and streamlining development processes for property owners. Following a consistent streamlined process with a clear vision and standards allows a a property owner to save time and cost by having clear expectations for design, needed improvements, and the process. This in turn incentivizes reinvestment. The proposed project is designed to further the public interest, health, safety, and welfare by supporting redevelopment and reinvestment, because well-maintained and improved properties attract more thriving businesses and activity, which in turn has beneficial effects on public safety and the surrounding neighborhoods. And here we have a simplified list of the staff's recommendations that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council: consider the addendum, approve the general plan elements, adopt the specific plans, approve the rezones, and approve the ordinance amendment to Title 19, the zoning ordinance. And with that, we can take any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you, Jessica. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this time?
I have a question for staff. Thank you. Jessica, thank you for your presentation. There was a lot in it to digest. But I do have a question on the multifamily housing. And you said there was no CUP required, but notice will be sent out to residents within 300 feet of the proposed property, and no hearing will be held, but one may be held if requested. What is the process for requesting one or organizing one, residents?
So, yeah, it would be processed as a design review permit, and then it's similar to what we do for administrative permits. We send out a notice that says, "We are proposing to approve this project, but if you would like to object or you would like to have a public hearing held, please submit your comments too." And then if we receive a request for a public hearing, then we get it scheduled for a public hearing.
That can be an email, a letter, a person walking up to the front counter, a phone call. So it's anybody contacting us, asking for the item to be agendized at a public hearing.
It's not a formal process. It doesn't require payment of anything.
There's no payment, no form to submit.
Great, Jessica.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I don't have any.
Okay. I will now open the public hearing and the public comment period. Let me remind speakers that you have five minutes to speak, and when you come up, please state your name for the record. And if you have not yet, please fill out a blue card located on the podium, and you can leave it on the podium or hand it to staff.
Hi there. How's it going, honorable members of this committee? My name's Eric Eisenhammer. I am a resident of the Vineyard Neighborhood, and I also own a business property that is in the Commercial Corridors Project on Sunrise, 1139 Smith Lane is my property. And I've read the proposed ordinance, and I do have several concerns about it, and I also suspect that we might have many other members of the community that have concerns. And specifically, the issues that I saw were, in the area where my office is, the 600 units that are being proposed, I want to ask if a survey has been conducted in that neighborhood to gauge whether people in that neighborhood are supportive of that, because such an increase in density and the number of housing units is going to bring with it as much as, and I appreciate the fact that in these plans, you guys have, it seems to me, done a really good job trying to mitigate the potential impacts. But regardless, I think that we're going to see increases in traffic. I think that there's going to be public safety impacts from more people, meaning more people is just inherently more potentials for criminal incidents, and of course, more noise. I think a lot of us moved to Roseville because we like that this community has a more, not exactly semi-rural, but we're certainly not a Sacramento or a San Francisco or LA. So I think that whether we add these units, that might be something that people in the neighborhood might not want. And a few other things that I feel like are appropriate to examine and to examine the community's opinion of are the minimum 25 units per acre high density that I saw on the proposed ordinance, the ministerial objective design standard process, and the potential of a developer to receive a reduction in the parking requirement. Because as you know, if you've spent much time in the part of Roseville where this proposal is slated for, there's already quite a lot of difficulty that people have finding parking, as well as a lot of traffic. And finally, the last thing I want to mention is that if in fact you were to find that people in the neighborhood feel that this is too much density and too many new units and do have concerns, like I do, about some of these aspects I mentioned, whether you guys would be able to look at whether this law, whether this proposal is connected to state law, and whether there are options for addressing the state laws that are requiring more density in communities like Roseville around the state, for example, SB 9 and SB 10. Because there are people who are working in other communities around the state, council members, mayors, people of that nature, that are working to try to reform the SB 9 and 10 policies. So I'd be interested in you guys making a recommendation on if that's an option and whether that's an option that would be feasible to explore. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Barbara Haig. I live on Main Street, so I'm not in any of the concerned areas, but I do have concerns. My base is saying, my first concern is about water. As you know, California is experiencing a drought that we may not ever actually come out of. I'm concerned about the fact that these areas that are going to be built on may currently be permeable space, which means the water goes through the ground into the groundwater and continues to revitalize our supply. I'm afraid that with the paving of all of these areas, we may lose the ability to retain that water, which may then drain down into the sewer system and be lost to us. So I'm wondering if concerns are being addressed by providing permeable concrete and permeable surfaces, even though they're paved. I know that technology does exist, and I think it would be useful. I'm also wondering if solar is going to be included in any of this building, because that would help to mitigate the need for more electrical power. I'm also interested in whether or not you are going to be, in effect, creating food deserts. I'm not a blueprint reader, so I don't know how many markets and other commercial-type establishments might be included in these plans, but if you have a density of 850 new units without building new markets, and I might add new schools, as well as possible parking, as was mentioned here, necessary for 850 units, if we consider that each unit has only one car, which in most cases they would have more than one car, I think that's a lot of parking that would be impacting on our streets. So to summarize, I'm worried about environmental impact of losing the water in a drought period. Those of us that actually live here and already have houses are being asked to limit our watering while you're building 850 new units for people who, you know, theoretically don't have an association. I'm worried about a food desert. I'm worried about schools. Where are the children going to be going? I'm worried about solar, and I'm worried about parking. And lastly, I'll just add, I know that there is a 1% for art requirement in many areas. I wonder if that is a requirement in Roseville, and I wonder what's being done to allocate that money to artists in the local community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That's for public projects. Okay.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mike Ryan. I live in the area. A couple years ago, I moved here in 2018, and met some wonderful neighbors, and our neighbors were telling us about a weird funky, a couple weird projects going on. One was the Dutch Brothers that was vehemently opposed by the community, and the city council saw it fit to not, you know, approve that, and that was great. However, on the corner of Nevada and Douglas, there was also vehemently opposed to, you know, a placement or production of 17 or 25 homes, just something small, almost like a test run. We all said, hey, you know, this is crazy, like, we're not really hearing too much about it, and when we do, it's this gobbin' knowledge. It's wild. Like, why isn't this, like, for lack of a better word, dumbed down for the public that we aren't all developers? We're not all in this developing field. Why can't we get something a little bit easier to understand? Regardless, one of the items was parking. You know, hey, we're going to put these homes there, these duplexes, $550,000 worth, you know? Back at the time, you know, 2019, 2018, I mean, like, we discussed in this room that not one person is going to be able to afford a $550,000 home. It's going to be a dual-income household. And the way they worked it out was like, oh, well, you can fit two cars, but you can't open two car doors to get out. Like, you have to, hopefully, your car's on a downslope, put the car in neutral, get out of the car, slam the car door, and the car stops as you stop in the carport. It was wild. Like, there was all these promises that the police are going to come by and make sure that there's no skateboards or surfboards outside the house, and, you know, and so there was this big hoopla about just parking 25 additional places. And we got to thinking, what? So anyways, the city council went ahead and came back and was like, you know what? 25 is too much. Let's bump it down to like 17 or 18. Great. Still was too much, in my opinion, you know? That ship has sailed fast. But a couple topics that I want to be passionate about is, one, again, the parking, you know? 600 units, that's wild. That's so much. For somebody, for the city to be worried about people to be coming into this area Thursday nights, food truck Thursdays. I mean, people flock from east Roseville. I know people that come from Citrus Heights. This area doesn't have a problem of attracting business or money. It's the charm of Roseville that attracts people to here for what it is. There's no need to add in additional 600 people. So there's the parking. The other thing is, the timeline that was brought up on the screen here, 2019 to 2020 to '21, intermittently, it was mentioned that little bits of comments from the city residents were brought in. Like, I live on one of these streets nearby. I wasn't notified of this? We were told to stay in our homes during this time? What happened? Was this done in the dark, where this was just like behind the citizens' backs? Like, it doesn't, it's a bit frustrating, and I'm sure this wasn't the intent, but at the same time, conducting these activities during this time seemed like an irresponsible time, irresponsible thing to do, not because of COVID, but because the amount of people that were, the circumstance that we were told not to do. We weren't supposed to go out and associate with other people. We weren't supposed to go out and mingle and share ideas. We're supposed to, we were told to stay in our homes, not go give surveys. I'm a veteran, and I fought for this country. I really appreciate your time and your consideration. I haven't gotten many times to speak in a forum like this, and it's great to feel this immense sense of pride that what I did actually mattered, and I get to see my work and, or my, the results of my work here in the democratic method. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your service. Any other comments? Would you mind giving your blue card to the staff table, please?
Over here, anywhere over here. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Dodge. I live on Maryland, real close to here. And I just wanted to ask, or I guess there is a question in there, but I'll open by first saying that the Roseville City Ordinance is inconsistent in one particular area, and that's lighting. There is a code written for how lighting is done in business districts, but for residential zoning, there is no code. And so I'm just wondering if there's been any consideration for how, particularly where we've got mixed business and residential, what, if there's going to be anything done to kind of basically guard against potential issues for lighting? Because, for example, in the business districts, their security lighting, it has to be pointed a certain way, it has to be set up. It's very specific about how that's done. But in residential, it's the Wild Wild West. I mean, it's, you got, you can have somebody with security lighting, and there's a lot of people that are concerned about security, so there's a lot of these bright LED lights that are shining directly into other people's homes and that kind of thing. So I'm not sure, actually, if this is even the forum to bring this up, but it just dawned on me as you were presenting that that could be an issue. So I thought I'd just bring it forward here. Thank you.
Hello again, Vice Director of Commissions, my name is Derek Pell. I'm a resident here in Roseville in the Folsom Road Neighborhood Association. I had a couple of questions that came up just based on the presentation. You know, do the proposed changes in the zoning, like removing Shearer Street and those little changes along Sunrise, do those meaningfully impact the housing capacity of the plans? And then, for the multifamily housing, where your greater land or less than 25 dwelling units an acre, you know, does the cost of the design review permit differ if you have to have a hearing versus can be requested? You know, thank you for the staff for bringing this together. I've had comments of them, and they've been very responsive. You know, I generally am very highly supportive of the plan to create more infill housing, and I think the commission should recommend the plans to council. We're all concerned about housing affordability, and streamlining the process for private development is one strategy to tackle this. The plans to have buildings close to the street, mixed-use, walkable, bikable areas, I think that's the way that cities should be going. The city should be applauded for this type of long-range planning and growth. It lines up with the direction the state government and assembly is taking, including AB 2011 this year allowing for development of high-density housing on larger corridors. This is, you know, for some of the information I was reading, the lowest greenhouse gas-producing area of the city. It's a perfect area to double down and invest in sustainable growth. I moved to my neighborhood because it's walkable, it's bikable, Trader Joe's, the library, downtown parks, and I think this plan could really complement the area. I really enjoy my neighborhood, and frankly, I look forward to welcoming new neighbors. Dense infill close to amenities is both the most environmentally sustainable growth option as well as the only fiscally responsible growth path. Dense mixed-use, people-scaled land use generally has a higher tax base per acreage, partly due to not having vast swaths of unproductive parking. It doesn't require new roads, substations, that all degrade over time and take our tax money to maintain. Furthermore, water use in multifamily housing has been shown to be significantly lower on a per capita basis than single-family housing, and modern building codes are very energy-efficient. I think that the proposal not limiting the site density is forward-looking and allows the market to propose projects that meet the needs of the area without constraint. Staff took a lot of input on design guidelines, and I think in general, the resulting guidelines are solid, and they really blend into these areas. My concern with the project revolves around the lack of vision for the roads and corridors and what they will become. The plan is a long-range planning document and does well with land use objectives, but what's a vision for transportation to support the intensified land use? Land use, transportation, two sides of the same coin. The plan clearly states that the goal is to create an urban, walkable, bikable areas, and also that these corridors were developed during the '50s where non-auto modes of transportation were not really considered, yet proposes no changes to the physical street configuration to improve non-auto-centric modes of transportation. The rendering shown in the plans, great, but none of the streets in the plans look like that. I understand the main scope of the plan is not intended to involve this. However, one of the objectives is to, quote, "upgrade pedestrian and bicycle..." one of the objectives is to, quote, "upgrade pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure to create safe connections within the planned area." Um, I understand that street configurations are expensive, and they take a long time. Um, I would ask, uh, staff and the city strongly consider, at least planning, to study how to implement a complete streets program. Such improvements could be sidewalk widening, lane narrowing and reductions, and creating safer, protected intersections. You know, the safety of children walking to school in the area would be greatly approved if they didn't have to cross four lanes of Douglas. Uh, in conclusion, I support dense infill housing in Roseville, I think the commission should recommend the, the, these specific plans to the city council. Um, I'm just concerned that without street configuration changes, uh, it might be hard to achieve the full overarching goals of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Commission, and, uh, good evening, planning staff. Mr. Bitter, Ms. Hawker, Ms. Lynch, good to see you. I'm Chris Huers, I'm the former head of the, uh, Folsom Road Neighborhood Association, and a few years ago, I got the pleasure and, um, maybe pain, as well as sitting down with the, uh, with the, the city manager and assistant city manager, and, uh, putting a bug in their ear about getting zoning changed on Douglas. It's a mess, I told them, every time somebody tries to bring something in, we have a fistfight. There's gotta be a way to get past this. Uh, we'd just come through the bruising of Dutch Brothers, and Dutch Brothers didn't like it, we didn't like it, and et cetera, et cetera. So, this is pretty cool, in my hum, my very humble opinion, we have a zoning overlay that clears up a lot, awful lot of the issues. Um, I think they, I think, actually, uh, what, uh, Derek was talking about is, uh, a general praise of the specific plans with some questions, there are an awful lot of hanging questions in here, and he did a great job of pointing out some, if you don't mind, uh, I'll add to the list. Uh, there's, there's, uh, I live over on Donner, and I have a business over on Douglas, so I'm impacted, uh, twice on this one, and, um, uh, that business is in a, a place that was built in nineteen thirty-four, and, uh, it's right next to Derry Queen, nifty place. I'm, I'm left wondering, looking at the, uh, specific plan verbiage, uh, what the private property owners are going to need to do. There's, there's statements in there about private property owners will need to come up to a level, and then it's kind of left there, will need to come up to a level. Um, the, the streetscapes are straightforward, and, uh, private property needs to get up here, I don't know what here is, and I'm kind of nervous about it, as you, as you might imagine. Um, there's also, uh, a statement in there about that planning, uh, will, uh, look at considerations for alternate modes of, of transportation. I hope you'll do more, because, uh, as we've pointed out, the traffic situation, I don't know, have you, have you gone down Douglas today? Yeah, I waited, uh, I ride my bike to work, or I walk to work, I'm a four-minute walk from front door to front door, uh, that's why I bought the place. Um, okay, well, I waited for about three minutes in the turn lane on Douglas, waiting for it to clear enough that I could get my bike across the turn lane, uh, that's a current load. Um, so, I, I don't know, the, uh, I am under no illusion, uh, about the state requirements. We've got state requirements, and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to pony up eight-hundred-and-fifty units somehow, I get that, um, but the, the gap on the, uh, on the traffic is, is considerable. Um, and the, so, to deepen that, or to, to just take a look at that a little deeper, uh, about, uh, what, two years ago, year and a half ago, some neighbors and I met with Scott Albert, um, and Jenna, the, uh, the head traffic engineer, uh, about the, uh, about the, what is it, Sutter behind us, behind, uh, Doug, the, uh, Roseville Square, it just got repaved, and we got this marvelous story about how there would be traffic calming, and, uh, and they said, yeah, don't worry about the, the crosswalk, that's, that's, you know, it's, it's kind of passe. Well, now, you run. If you want to cross that street, you run, because there, there may be traffic calming in there, but I would call it subtle, very subtle, as in, there's nothing there. Those folks are fast, and they sure as hell don't want you in that road. Now, we, we walk, an awful lot of people walk, we've got young kids in there, and there's no reason why we shouldn't be walking in that neighborhood. So, the connection between what planning is doing, and what the planning commission is talking about, and what engineering is doing, is massive. So, I guess my open question to you is, how do we connect the city? You've made some great statements, lovely, but the, the implementation is not up to you, it's up to traffic planning, or, well, traffic engineering, and that's no fun, because they don't believe the same thing, at least as far as I can tell. Uh, I think I'm out of time, thank you for your time, and, uh, thank you guys, nice, nice work.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Anyone else?
Let me start off with some of your comments.
Okay, I'll close the public comment period. Any other questions from staff, or for staff, from the commission?
Chair Covington, do you want us to kind of give a, an overview of, we've taken some pretty good notes, I think, amongst the three of us, um, I think there, there's probably a few things that, that might be helpful for the commission, and for, uh, the folks in the audience, and anybody watching this to, to hear. Um, I think the first, the, the first, uh, thing, we, we tried at the workshops, um, to reiterate this, but when we talk about eight-hundred-and-fifty units, um, we, we've tried to impress upon the fact that we, we've done infrastructure studies to show that there's capacity to accommodate eight-hundred-and-fifty units. There's not a requirement that eight-hundred-and-fifty units are gonna be built, there's not a, a specific location, we know there's, we really know that there's one location where somebody is, is, uh, looking at, at a multifamily project, and that's the parcel, um, at the corner of Lead Hill and, uh, um, North Sunrise, across the street from the, it's, um, across the street from the, uh, I'm not even sure what it is, southeast corner, uh, there, uh, there's a former data center site, there's a, one of the buildings has a post office distribution, um, facility in it, and there's been interest in that, and so they've talked about a large multifamily project at that site, so it's, it's nowhere near any existing residential uses, but that's not, but even though we're accommodating that, as far as the infrastructure goes, when you look at these corridors, most of the, most of the parcels, especially any of the vacant parcels, are very small, acre at the most, um, most or less, so to accommodate all of these units, you're, especially Douglas Harding, um, Atlantic Street, you're probably talking about redeveloping an existing property. So, you're, you're, you're taking a use that exists, uh, and replacing that use, so there's, there's going to be, there, there might be a delta as far as traffic goes, um, but it's, it's gonna not be very significant, um, if, if there's even an increase, it might actually go down, depending on the, depending on the property, so I think that's an important thing, is, is that this isn't eight-hundred-and-fifty units next to your house, this is a capacity study, um, and, and the, the land use and zoning in these corridors allows multifamily housing now, today, um, through conditional use permits, so if somebody can come and make the findings, they can build, they could build housing now, they would have to go do their own infrastructure studies, so we've kind of streamlined the first eight-hundred-and-fifty units, but there are land use and zoning designations in all of these corridors, vacant parcels and developed parcels that would allow housing, sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, uh, was the traffic study done, uh, purely for, um, automobile traffic, or was it for pedestrians and cyclists also accommodated?
So, you don't, I mean, when you, when you talk about a traffic study, you're talking about, uh, trip generation rates and road carrying capacities, so we don't, we, we, and Lauren can get into a little bit more detail, we've tried to provide plans that, to enhance and to, to allow for future improvements of roads that would, that would improve pedestrian and bicycle safety. This, this project that we're bringing before you tonight, it was, is, um, we have plan, we have money for the planning portion of it. This gets us to a point where we can work with public works and determine where it's appropriate for any, any, um, physical infrastructure modifications, but then we have to go out and get, find, find funding for it. There's no, currently, there's no funding allocated for any of these improvements, so that's why we've, that's why it's aspirational, I mean, you'll, you'll hear these terms, aspirational, but without the plan in place, we can't be competitive, um, for grants to do any of the work, so you have to have the plan first, um, so you can't, I mean, Mr. Pell makes some really good comments about improvements, um, on the streets, but without, without a, a, a plan for that, and then we have to work with our public work staff, um, because we, you know, we have traffic volumes to accommodate throughout the city, we have other general plan policies, so there's, there's competing interests there, so we're, we feel like we're setting the groundwork, um, so that in the future, we'll be able to, um, uh, make improvements to the bike and pedestrian environment on these corridors. This plan isn't going to, you're not going to see public works after, you know, if, if these, if these projects are approved by the city council, you're not gonna see public works in the next twelve months out there, you know, digging out lanes and putting in bike lanes, or painting bike lanes, um, you just aren't, but it's, it's contemplated in the plans, there's, there's policies to encourage bike and ped and alternate modes of transportation, I mean, we'd love to have a more robust transit system in this portion of town, we'd love to have, uh, better bike and, and ped facilities, but again, it's competing, competing, um, priorities, uh, um, and so I think that's part of the aspirational part, and that might be part of, the hard part of, of understanding these, these specific plans, because this is a long-range land use policy plan. Um, it, it's not a, it's not a, a current planning application where somebody's gonna pull a building permit in, in three months and start building something, um, it's, it's kind of, you know, these three corridors haven't had much specific, uh, planning policy attention, um, placed on them, uh, ever in the city, and so that's what, that's what we're doing now, is trying to set that, set that tone for the future.
Excuse me one second, Craig.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask the audience to refrain from speaking when somebody's talking up here, so we can understand the conversation, please, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, you know, the downtown specific plan, the Riverside specific plan, those were done, you know, I think Riverside, two thousand and six or so, um, you know, that was at a time where we had redevelopment dollars, and that's why you have the, the, the street frontage improvements, but if you go along Riverside, and you look at some of the, the, um, the land use policies, we had mixed use, and we wanted to incorporate residential uses, very aspirational land use goals in that, in that Riverside plan, um, except for the, uh, the redevelopment money that, that was put in, we haven't really seen a commensurate public investment to, to take advantage of that plan, um, we haven't seen resident, new residential projects come in, in fact, we, we do have, we finally, I think, got an application last week for the first one, so that's fifteen years later. Downtown is, is the same, same thing, we had redevelopment money, I mean, the city, the resources the redevelopment agency put into downtown are tremendous, with utilities and streetscape improvements, and we have seen, um, some projects, but if you look at the projects in downtown, Mercy Housing, St. Anton, who's just going up, Meta Housing, affordable housing projects where they're subsidized with, um, housing, housing trust fund money, so not a lot of, not a lot of new private investment for new construction or redevelopment, we have seen some redevelopment, I mean, obviously, uh, you can look on Vernon Street, and a lot of those buildings have, have really, um, improved, and, and a few projects in, in, uh, Old Town as well. Um, but I think that's one of the big, that's, it's, it's, and it's hard at this stage to, to really explain that, and I know somebody talked about, you know, trying to, to dumb things down, or, or, or talk in plain English, and we, you know, I'll be honest, we try that, we, we try our best, we try not to use all the bureaucratic, you know, we try not to just use all acronyms, um, in our documents, and we, and we could, um, and it, it's hard to, it's hard to convey that, 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 these are big lofty goals, that, uh, you know, we felt like the city council, when they made this a priority, to put some attention to these three specific plans, um, uh, that that is, that is what they were expecting, is to have some lofty goals that, that may not be achievable in the, in the near term, in the first five, ten years, but that, that we have, that staff in the future has, that that's what, um, the city wants to, wants to, uh, that's the vision the city wants to see ultimately on those properties. And so I think that's, that's one of the hard parts about, you know, especially with, you've got three plans at once, so there's three different, you know, we're bringing a lot at you guys at the same time, um, but, and people get, we've really had a lot of folks, and we've, we've spent a lot of time talking to people, get hung up on this eight-hundred-and-fifty number, again, if you think about fifty units in Atlantic Street, that's gonna be decades to absorb fifty units in Atlantic Street corridor plan, unless something really drastic happens to the economy that we're not contemplating. Um, uh, Douglas Harding, you know, that's gonna be a while, you'll, you'll see, you know, a few, a few projects here and there, the Nevada Street Lofts is the only residential project we've had in twenty years, you know, in that corridor, um, and then, in that, in those corridors, you have, it's mostly redevelopment, there's very little vacant land left, so somebody's gonna have to, you know, some business is gonna have to make economic sense to tear something down to, to rebuild, um, again, aspirational, uh, and then, you know, Sunrise Douglas, that's the one where we, we have somebody that's, that, there's a property that's ready for that, um, and they want to do a, a nice market rate project, and if you think about it, it's been, it's been talked about, bringing residents in is gonna bolster some of those, uh, you know, in these older parts of town, it's gonna bolster some of those commercial, uh, users, it's gonna, you know, provide more customers, um, and you're swapping, you're swapping out one use for another, so it's not all brand-new traffic, it's not, you know, eight-hundred new units of traffic that never existed before, it's, somebody's, somebody's leaving, you know, there's trips that are, are not gonna be there anymore, and you're replacing them, and so there, like I said, there'll be a delta, but it could be a plus or minus delta at the end of the day. Um, so I just wanted to, I, I want to kind of give that big overview, and I know we can go into some more of the details, you know, the, um, the, uh, public process, we've spent a lot of time, there's been, you know, the, the city's social media has been ripe for several years on this, we've had, it wasn't just people coming in person, um, we had virtual, uh, virtual workshops and virtual meetings, where we had, I don't know if it's hundreds, but, you know, I have to go look at it, it's probably, you know, we had, we had one virtual workshop where there were, each of the three specific plans had a breakout room, and I know in the breakout room, I participated, and there was thirty people in it, so if you think about the different breakout rooms, there were multiple people participating, hundreds of phone calls, um, we've gone out to the community when asked, uh, the workshops, so, so over time, there's been ample, uh, opportunity, um, uh, for people, and I know in your staff report, we have like a whole page of what the public outreach was, but, uh, you know, and we've talked about it at city council, it's, it's a recurring theme, um, in, in our department, so I just wanted to make sure that that's, that's out there, that, that, this has been one of the more robust projects as far as public outreach has, has been concerned. We've never shied away from a, a phone call, a meeting request, uh, from anybody, in-person, uh, um, citizens coming to our permit center, uh, we've talked to them about it, and I don't know, you know, I'll, I'll leave it to the commission if, if some of the, there's, there's several, I mean, we have answers to most of the comments that, that came up, I don't know, um, if we want to go through those, some of those more, uh, specific ones, we're happy to, um, but anything you, you need to feel comfortable, uh, um, with this item, um, we're here for you guys. And I don't know if I missed something big that I should have, but if I did, please jump in.
Go over some.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, could, real quickly, yeah, first of all, thank you for the presentation, I thought it was excellent, I think there's a perception in the community as a whole, when we talk about eight-hundred-and-fifty units, that the plan is, wants this approved, the city, the city is gonna go out and build eight-hundred-and-fifty units on these lots, I want to clear that up, that's not what's on the table today, what's on the table today is to clean up what's in the existing general plan and zoning ordinance, to allow property owners to do what they're already allowed to do, but allow it in a more streamlined fashion, to help facilitate that moving forward. There's no expectation this is gonna happen, quite likely, instead of eight-hundred-and-fifty, over the next twenty years, we might see two or three hundred, is probably a more realistic expectation of what that's gonna be, and it's all gonna be done with private investment, and not the city coming in and building these projects, because that's what I'm hearing out in the community, is the city has this plan, they're gonna come in and condemn properties, and they're gonna build these units, and they're all gonna be section-eight housing, that's what I'm hearing, and I want to make clear- And I want to make clear that that's not what it is, because that's not what I'm reading in the staff report at all.
I really appreciate that, Commissioner Jensen. I probably should have included that in my little diatribe earlier. You're right. This is, this is, these plans are, we're trying to incentivize and streamline and make it easier for private investment, for people that own property within these corridors to improve their properties, redevelop their properties. You know, we've, we've, we glossed over it. We've tried to make the non-conforming use a little bit, section a little bit easier than the normal zoning ordinance would allow. So, so people that may have a, a use that's non-conforming with their existing zoning, they can improve it, whereas right now they, it, it's much harder and much more expensive because we want, we want to improve this, these corridors. And then, Mr. Ewers brought up, you know, what, what do these rules mean for, for me? This plan is, is, these standards in development are for new, new development. When somebody comes in, they want to improve their property or, or they have a project on there, these standards will apply. If you, and, and really, it's, it's to redevelop. I mean, it's something significant that you're going to change.
And I appreciate that, because what it does, it not only streamlines the process for them, but it also sets the expectations. If we're going to streamline this for you, this is what our expectations are going to be as it develops. And so from looking at it through that lens,
Yeah.
I think that the staff has done an excellent job of outlining exactly what this is. But I do want the community to understand, this is not the city coming in and the city looking to build 850 affordable units in any specific location. It's to allow the property owners to do what they already have the right to do, putting some policies in place as to what the expectations the city would do. And if they move forward, we're going to do our best to allow them to do that in an expedited fashion to reduce uncertainties which reflect even costs.
We're, we're trying to make it easier and cheaper for people to improve their properties.
And then lastly, and I apologize.
That's okay.
And I really do appreciate the comments regarding traffic and how we're going to get people from point A to point B. But right at this point, we don't know where those units are going to sit. And to so, to go and throw money at a problem that doesn't exist today. Now, there are some areas in the city, and I agree 100% that where those exist, and Jan is outstanding, I've worked with Jan for a long time, to sit down with them and figure out if there's things that the city can do to improve those areas. I support doing those right now, whether these projects happen or not, because those areas need to happen. But in the context of combining that directly into the plan, I think it's a little premature. I think having those goals set in the plan as to what the expectations are down the line helped public work staff and planning staff in the council look how they could allocate funding in the future to address those issues as they come up. So that's where I'm at. And I apologize for taking so much time.
Go ahead.
So I just have a couple of, a couple of comments or possibly questions, but I've been following this along with this, as you have been developing all of this. And I just want to publicly say, the, the public has had a robust input into what, what we're dealing with tonight. And I have watched that process. And there have been hundreds of people who have provided input. I've also watched you folks listen to that input and adjust your plans based upon the feedback that you're, you're getting. And I, and I just think it's really important for, for the public to understand and, and know that. The second thing is, I'm not a developer. I'm not an engineer. I'm not a specialist in sewer or water or anything like that. What I can tell you is the material that you provided, that has been evolving over time, and we've been sitting here for two or three weeks with, with the final stuff that we have in front of us, very readable, very understandable. You've done a fantastic job of, of putting this material in front of us so that we can be considering what's, what's here. Everything can always be improved, but I can tell you that as someone who is not a professional in this area, I'm just a pastor, I can understand everything that has been put in front of us here, including some of the very technical stuff that are, were part of the addendum. And so I just want to, I would just want to compliment you on that and make sure the public knows that. The final comment that I have is that part of what we're doing here tonight is spending time considering not just the way things are today, but we're looking out 20 years or so into the future. That is so wise for us to be doing. There are so many communities that don't do that and they are paying the consequences for it. So I, I thank you. I thank the city council for being on top of this a few years ago. And, and I just wanted to throw those comments out there. Appreciate it.
Just one point of clarification. I understand that what we're considering here is incentivizing and streamlining, a process for incentivizing and streamlining existing property owners for improving their properties. But there is no requirement that existing property owners must improve. I think I heard maybe
That's correct.
A bit of a question
Yeah.
Alluding to that.
The, the standards only apply if you come to us with a project. If you're proposing to redevelop your property in some way, that's when the standards apply. And even then, if it's a very minor project, you know, if you're coming forward with a paint color change, you're not going to be asked to widen the sidewalk, right?
Or install landscaping or, yeah, we're, yeah. It's proportional. I mean, it has to be proportional. Now, if you're scraping a building, you're going to build a brand-new building, then we're going to
There's going to be a process.
Commensurate, commensurate investment in the, in the public portion of your project. Yeah.
Okay. But there's no expectation that all property owners in this area are going to need to make improvements?
Okay. Yeah, probably there's an expectation that very few will for, you know, it'll be very slow, is the expectation.
That was my understanding, it's just, you know, clarification.
But maybe hopefully, you know, it'd be great if we are wrong, but, yeah.
Sure. And, and I didn't do anything. To thank the members of the public who have taken the time to speak this evening, we certainly appreciate all the involvement. And to thank staff again for what is clearly a well-thought-out, a lot of time spent on this.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just want to clarify and make sure that everybody understands that we're not discussing any particular housing project or location or plan. And there, there will be an opportunity for people, if they so wish, to discuss a particular housing plan in the future. You said that there won't be a CUP process, but there will be a process where you can actually ask for a public hearing to be held.
There will be, there, there will still be the design review permit process required. So yes, there will be an opportunity for public input still, that this project does not, to your point, mean that there's no further discretionary review, is what we call it, of, of future housing projects consistent with this plan.
For, as an example, the, the Nevada Street Lofts project and the, and the Dutch Brothers project were two projects that were, were brought up as both being, I think, catalysts for the, for the city council to direct staff to, to do these plans. Both of those projects had, had community meetings. I think one may have had a couple of community meetings and one had at least one or two that were very popular. Chris can, can back me up, very, very well-attended. And that, that's still going to be, that, that's still going to be expected from staff, is that, that if somebody comes in and wants to develop something, we're going to have them meet with the neighborhood association, whichever, if, if there is a neighborhood association. I think Douglas Sunrise, you know, the northern, north of Douglas, might be hard-pressed to find a neighborhood association right now. But, but Douglas Harding for sure and Atlantic Street for sure, we're going to, we would engage the community and make sure they know about it so that they have an opportunity to understand the project before the notices go out to determine whether or not they want to ask for a hearing.
And just as a point of clarification, because somebody commented about the objective design standards process, that's referenced in the plans, just as a point of clarification, that's not a new process. That's an existing process, a ministerial approval process for affordable housing projects that applies citywide. We're just referencing it in these plans. We're not creating that new process with these plans.
Thank you. Other questions?
I would be redundant at this point.
Okay. And I did have a question. For some of the more specific questions that came out of the community, is there an avenue for them to speak to staff if this is not the right forum for those discussions, like things about existing issues with either traffic or parking or lighting that it seems some folks might be having? What's the best way for them?
Always. Yeah. Yeah, always. The project has an email address, the project itself, which is corridorplans@rooseville.ca.us. And also, anybody is welcome to email myself or Jessica or call us. We absolutely respond to everything. And some of these things, it's really much more useful, and that's what we do, to have a conversation so that you can have a, a back and forth about some of these things and get the information that folks are looking for.
So I'm going to quickly hit some of the topics at a high level and just see if you can tell us and the public
Sure.
If they should reach out through the email or to call the office directly, or if there's a different venue and it's actually not part of this, just so people have a good understanding how they can get their questions answered. Water concerns, it sounds like this plan does touch on that, so they can reach out about water?
Yeah, we can absolutely talk to anybody about water issues. I will say that in general, citywide, the city plans for cumulative build-out water supplies. So we don't plan project by project. We make sure there's enough water to supply the city when it's fully built out, which is about 18,000 more units than there are today because of development in the West area. So, so water supply is planned for well in advance.
Okay. Any sustainable type design ideas like the permeable concrete or solar, is that covered by this plan or is there a different?
So the California Building Code has solar requirements for, for residential projects. They'd be required to do, meet the Building Code requirements. I don't think we have any requirements for permeable paving, but we do have water quality, you know, water quality detention requirements in our engineering staff.
Yeah.
So there would be treatment, treatment for any runoff.
Yeah, there's what we call low-impact design standards that apply to all new development and major redevelopment. And so honestly, at the end of the day, if sites redeveloped because of those standards that are in place now that weren't in the 60s when some of this stuff was built, the, the site will actually have more recharge and more water infiltrating than there is now, because there will be things like bio swales and detention instead of all pavement.
Okay. Questions about public art or any policies related to that?
So once again, and this is something I know a little bit about, the, the 1% that was referenced, that's for art and public places programs. That's, that's typically public projects, so city-initiated projects where the city would designate 1% for public art. That, that is, you usually don't apply that to private development applications. We do not have a, a public art program. I mean, we, you know, we support, we work in conjunction with the Blue Arts and private developers. You know, you've seen murals around town and some street art, but that's, that's really, I don't think it's anything that, it wouldn't be anything that any of the specific plans would, would need to address specifically.
Okay. Regarding schools, is that a school district question that folks need to?
So we reached out to the school districts very early on with this project. All projects involving housing, we reach out to the school district. So they were given the opportunity to comment and the school districts affected weren't concerned about additional student population from this project.
Okay. Regarding lighting, and it sounds like specific to residential, is that something to do with this?
So that would, that would have to be, that would be regulated through nuisance, code enforcement through nuisance complaints. There are no standards. Our lighting standards in the city are for security lighting for, for commercial and industrial properties. And, and obviously, you know, multifamily projects have lighting in their parking lots, parking lot lighting. And we were, we, you know, we ensure, you've had many projects before you, where we ensure that the light doesn't spill over across property lines you're required. I mean, it's not that light isn't visible from an adjacent property, but the glare cannot spill across property lines. But if, if a resident strings up some very bright LED Christmas lights, that would be, have to be some type of code nuisance complaint. And I'm not sure what level
Yeah.
Would, would need to get to to
Yeah. And I can attest that, that our code enforcement division does routinely enforce in residential areas, lighting issues that arise to that level of, of a public nuisance, which I think was, the comments that I heard were mostly at the, at the individual residential level, people putting up lighting that was obnoxious to their neighbor. And that's something that our code enforcement division routinely deals with.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the last was, at least on my list from the comments, was regarding traffic, parking, safety. Am I correct that that's typically looked at more closely when you actually have a project in front of you?
Yeah, access design in particular, when you know, to Commissioner Jensen's point, where you know where the project is going and how many units it is and where it would be circulating. So that would be something we'd look at as part of the design review process.
Okay. And I, I do appreciate, there was a comment about current conditions with pedestrian safety that sounded like there were some problems. What's the best way for folks to get in touch with the city if they feel strongly that something needs to be done with a specific corner or crosswalk?
Chris hit the nail on the head. Janas Rovantes, who hopefully she's not watching this, but she, she's our, she's the city's resident expert on, on those types of situations. And they do, like I said, they spend a lot of time and they take every, every situation very seriously. And they, they work through the different competing issues with trying to make sure that there's the balance of public safety, crosswalks. And I think, can't remember the, it was the Sierra View project that was before you last fall, where we had the issue where there was a curve and there was a, a school across the street and, and some of the neighbors asked for a crosswalk. And our traffic engineers, you know, they went and analyzed it and said, no, we, we don't, we don't want people crossing the street here. So if you put a crosswalk somewhere, that encourages people, that means, that makes people feel like, hey, I can safely walk across this street. And for various reasons, you know, sightlines and engineering, you know, traffic engineering reasons, they came and said, no, we will, we will not put a sidewalk there because, you know, that is creating, it's creating more danger. It's creating a false sense of security. So our public works department and we work, you know, we get, I mean, development services, public works, we get these calls and we all work together.
And putting out a plug for the city's website, the Traffic Division does have a pretty good website that includes a frequently asked questions about various traffic concerns that people have about the location of stop signs, et cetera. And they have an email that's engineering@cityofrooseville.
Okay. And if the issue is really with cars going too fast on a certain road, is that public safety?
That's PD, yeah.
So PD would be the person
Police Department, sorry for the accent.
Okay. So any last comments from commissioners? I will, I think I closed, if I didn't, I will now close the public comment period. The public hearing. So with that, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to the Planning Commission. Consider the addendum to the 2035 General Plan Environmental Impact Report and recommend the city council approve the various ordinances and resolutions as listed in items 2 through 10 in the recommendation section of the Commercial Corridor Plans staff report.
Second? Uh-oh.
Okay. Commissioner Jensen has made the motion and Commissioner Pryor has seconded the motion. Lupe, your roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
Commissioner Heggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Brashiers?
Yes.
Commissioner Randolph?
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
And Chair Covington? Yes. The motion is approved. Next on the agenda is the commissioner and staff report.
I do have just a couple of quick updates for you. The first is for you and for the, the audience. The corridor plans are currently scheduled to, to, for the city council's November 16th agenda. So that's the, that's the date we're targeting, bringing your recommendation forward to the city council. I do know we have a meeting in two weeks and we'll be having a meeting in November and December on those, those dates as well. And just one meeting in each month, obviously, with the holidays at the end. But we will have items for you for the rest of the year. I think one other update for you is, we haven't had anything at city council in a while, but you took action on the Blue Oaks Commerce, I think it was the Blue Oaks Commerce Center a few weeks ago or, or last month. That was the industrial project on Blue Oaks. And I'll just report out, we received an appeal from the Lozodrury Law Firm, the same firm that that appealed the Sutter parking garage project. So that'll, I think we're targeting the same November 16th date for city council on that project as well. Other than that, we'll keep you busy through the rest of the year, though.
Thank you. Any last questions or comments from Commission? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
All right. Commissioner Brashears has made the motion, and Commissioner Pryor has seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.